Okay, we have a copy for you, the minutes from our last meeting. We had quite a bit of open discussion that we recorded in the meetings, so a lot more there to read at this time than most. Does anyone see any corrections or errors or anything that we need to address before I sign those minutes to be approved? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and sign these minutes to the record. The only deal out of the business that we had on the agenda for this month is just to bring attention to the public hearings that we're gonna have on the proposed rate increase. And so I will read this. So Walker County's sole commissioner Shannon Whitfield plans to hold three public hearings this month to provide citizens with a better overview of the county's financial 2018 budget, as well as an outline of how the county intends to address this massive debt. The proposed fiscal 2018 budget includes a property tax increase of two meals in the unincorporated locations of the county and 2.189 in the incorporated areas. The proposed annual tax increase on a home with a fair market value of $100,000 would be $76 in the unincorporated locations and $83.18 in the incorporated areas. That works out to less than $7 a month, which is about the amount of a combo meal at a fast food restaurant, popcorn at a movie, or some bottled waters or coffees. We have a very high level of debt compared to our revenue streams. And our most recent audit shows also having a negative fund balance of $7.5 million. If we don't change courses, it's gonna take us decades to pay off this obligation that's burdening our children and our grandchildren with the missteps of the past. The hearings will be the following dates and times. The first one will be Thursday, August 17th at 6:30 at the Lafette-Walker County Public Library at 305 South Duke Street, which is three doors down from this location. We will have a Saturday morning, August 19th at 10:00 a.m. at the Walker County Civic Center in Rock Springs. And then Thursday, back here on August 24th at our next scheduled meeting at 6:30 at the Walker County Commissioners Office at 101 South Duke Street. I had made a commitment back during the campaign that we would hold one of these public meetings on a Saturday. I encourage as many people as possible to attend the Saturday meeting. That will give us more time to go more in depth and go over an overview of the audit from last year. And also go deeper into the details of the budget. In the past, the prior administration would give about a three and a half page summary of the budget. This year, we're gonna be releasing more detailed information. The budget will probably be 50-plus pages long for people to see the detail by department of what the departments' requests are and also what the prior year history has been. So we'll give a lot more detailed information for the citizens to be able to tell how the tax dollars are being allocated for the new budget year. That officially adjourns our public meeting. So at this time, we'll move into any open discussion or general comments. So does anybody have anything they'd like to say? Does anybody have anything? Couple more things that I want to mention about the public hearings. The Saturday meeting, I would love to have a packed house. So we're gonna set up the civic center. Expect a big crowd. I want the citizens to be able to come out so they can be informed of what we're doing, to be able to see the savings and cuts that we've made, and also understand the projections and better understand why we are in need of the increase on the millage rate. And also, most importantly, to be able to answer questions or take comments from the public. Many times, people see things that we don't see, or sometimes we're too close to the woods to see the trees, so to speak. And so we're very open to the public comment. It's not gonna be a confrontational type thing, and we will not shun people from trying to speak as long as everyone is professional and courteous. And we'll let them have a few minutes to speak and give everybody an opportunity that wants to speak. And however long it takes, I'll be prepared to stay there all day if need be to make sure we have plenty of time to go through the process and answer everyone's questions. Also, I wanted to bring attention, Landon O'Neill, our intern from the University of Georgia and resident of Chickamauga area, I guess. He's been doing a great job interning here for the county. And I understand today's officially his last day of this intern program. And so I guess, Landon, you wanna tell us what your next journey takes you?
Sure.
Put you on the spot.
Yeah, I'm gonna be starting graduate school in Chattanooga UTC for public administration to hopefully work in some type of government and looking for a job as well, so that's about it.
All right, so Landon's been great and has been a big assistance to Joe. And I know Landon has put a lot of work into the new website that's under development and getting a lot of the data in that. So appreciate what you've done and very thankful to the Association of County Commissioners for providing that grant funding for that program. And so Landon was a great pick and has done a great job. Just wanna publicly thank you for your service and we wish you the best. And hopefully, one day, you'll be able to come back and help straighten this county out. So we appreciate what you've done. Does anybody else have any other questions? Or any comments or anything they'd like to say or add? Any other public discussion? It's really quite much tonight. Got a good turnout. I appreciate everybody coming out. It's one of the reasons why we moved the meetings to the evening to get better access and, most importantly, more parking. It's very difficult when you have court going on to find parking. So this gives everybody better access to the meetings. And we've pretty well got the parking lots to ourselves, so we can have a good crowd. So that's one thing that will help us on the public meeting on the 17th at the library. It's a bigger facility, bigger parking, so we hopefully will have a good turnout for it as well. Anything else? Anybody got? Quite much. I mean, even a smart remark, I'll take anything tonight. Everybody's good.
Very, Joe, man.
So, Joe? Oh, yes, thank you, thank you. There are some things we're gonna talk about. I'm glad you mentioned it. There is in your packet, there is a five-year history of the digest, if you did not see that in the paper. Also, we give you a copy of the road miles. Yeah, thank you, I'm sorry. I just wanted to give you an overview of this here, just for information. This comes from the Department of Transportation to give you some idea of how many road miles we have in the county compared to other counties around us. So Catoosa County's got a total of 423.46 miles of total miles. They only have 1.6 miles that's unpaid roads. So the rest of that 421.62 miles are asphalt paved roads. You look over to the next page, you'll see Chautauqua County is underlined. Total miles that they have in Chautauqua County is 419.54 miles of roads. And they have 13.57 miles of county roads that have not been paved. So they have 405.97 miles that are paved. If you look over the next at Dade County. Dade County has 243.6 miles with 19.74 miles that's unpaid roads in the county. So asphalt paved miles is 223.86. Now, when you look on the back at Walker County, it's where it really gets interesting. We have 674.2 miles in Walker County. So we've got more miles than any of the three counties surrounding us. But the big number is, is we've got 23.84 miles that are unpaid in Walker County for asphalt miles of 650.45. We will be proposing in the November election, we will be having a special election in Walker County, where we will put a T-splash on the ballot for a 1% sales tax increase that will be earmarked and can only be spent on transportation, maintenance and improvements such as paving, bridge replacement, so on and so forth. We are in a situation right now financially where we have close to a million dollars of grant money from the state, what they call "lemig" money, that the state allocates out to each county and every city. We have close to a million dollars currently on hand for road paving that we have not been able to spend that money. And the reason we've not been able to spend it is we don't have the 30% match to go with it. Because the state tells you, "We'll give you this money, but you've gotta match it 30%." So we need about $300,000 cash to put with that money to pave roads. We just haven't had it to do that. To compound matters, most likely by December of this year, 2017, we will get our 2018 allocation for the "lemig" program, which is just a few dollars over a million dollars. So they're gonna send us another million dollars. So what do you think the same problem we've got? We're probably not gonna have the match. If we can get the citizens in November to support this T-splash of this 1 cent increase, we can take that money to go toward our match. That sales tax is projected to bring in $3 million a year, times five years. The county will get 75% of that money, so that's $2,250,000 that's estimated that would come in, that we would be able to use for road maintenance, repairs, bridge improvements, replacements, and also road paving. And that would give us the funding to go with our state dollars that we need. So the citizens are gonna get to make that decision. It's not something that I have the authority, nor do the cities have the authority to actually pass or to put into ordinance. It's something that the citizens of this county will get to vote on in the election in November. I'm asking the citizens to support that because the alternative is, is we're gonna continue to dodge potholes together when we have money setting readily available that we're not able to use. And so this is something we'll talk more about at our public meetings, but I wanted to give y'all kind of a preview of this since we had a light agenda, make you aware of this, give you something to start thinking about. Many people say that sales tax is probably one of the most fairest taxes you've got a tax that you can do because it's a consumption tax. You know, you only pay the tax if you buy something. Some people say, "Well, we're gonna finish running all the business out of the county because we're increasing sales tax." Well, if we run them to Tennessee, they're gonna pay 9 3/4% tax on that, not interest, but tax. So still at an 8% rate, we're still almost 2% cheaper than what taxes are in Tennessee. Also, Dade County will have this on the ballot in November, and I know many other counties are also looking at it. This is the first time that it has been able to offer this as a single-county T-splash. About five years ago, they had a regional T-splash that was on the ballot to do regional programs. And I think there was 16 counties that we were involved in to do large regional transportation projects. I'll be the first one to admit, I voted against it because I felt like that Walker County most likely would be what's considered a donor county, where we would be collecting this sales tax and charging that and donating it to large projects closer to Atlanta. The state legislation went back into session this year and passed a single-county T-splash. So this is the first time that we would have the opportunity to pass a single-county T-splash. So all of these dollars would be spent within Walker County, 100%. The allocation would be broken out between the cities and the county, and 100% of that money would be spent in Walker County and no risk of it having to be shipped to Atlanta. Also, we will not bond this money out on this T-splash. We will utilize that money as it comes in. It will generate, I think it's about $180-something thousand dollars a month on average projections that would come in. So as those dollars come in, we would build those funds. It would be allocated. It would be a separate bank account. And we would be able to prove to the citizens at any time or produce quarterly reports to show that that money has 100% been used for transportation improvements. We will not take that money and divert it to other projects that has been done in the past. And so by not bonding it, we're gonna save tens of thousands of dollars in attorney fees. And we're also gonna save hundreds of thousands of dollars in interest. And we'll be able to take every dollar that comes in and go straight into our infrastructure for transportation and not waste the money on attorneys and the banks. And use that money as it is intended. So I know this is something you'll be hearing more about. I know some people say, "Well, we're being hit twice." But that's where the citizens are gonna get to decide what you want. If you want better roads in this county, this is an avenue for us to get there. If you want to move slower and not raise the 1%, we'll see over the next maybe two, three, four years if we can raise enough money to do the match with the state funds. They will allow us to carry that funding forward up to three years before we have to give it back. So I would hate to ever have to give it back when it's a grant money. Most importantly, where else can you go and get a 70% return on your money day one? And that's basically what the state is doing with that program, is they're giving you 70% on your money. So is there any questions about the T-splash now that we've talked about it?
If you had to give that grant money back, you'd never get it again, would you?
They would continue to allocate every year, but you're gonna lose a year in the rear. So you're basically gonna be giving up a million dollars a year.
And then we can, say the taxes goes through on then, okay? Then we'd get our money to keep them grants.
Yes.
And we wouldn't have to do it.
That's right.
You looked at $600,000.
Yeah, that we could use to go toward that for that $2 million. So, right now, based off of where asphalt paving rates are, and this is subject to go up or go down, so this is just kinda give you a rule of thumb of knowledge to work from with a round number. To resurface a road, one mile of road and to re-stripe it, you're currently looking at about $100,000 per mile to resurface. So if you've got $2.6 million of money, you could pave about 26 miles of road right from the start. In the past, they've been paving somewhere between about nine and 12 miles a year in the past. We've not done any paving this year at all. So when you start looking at the fact that we could bring in an additional $2 million, the state's gonna give us, you know, a million dollars a year. It would be great to be able to pave two or three times a year. More volume of roads has been paved in the recent past. So you see with over, you know, six, almost 675 miles of road, it's gonna take a long time to ever pave everything. And we've got some bridges that are in bad shape. If my understanding is correct, there's about five bridges in our county that school buses are not allowed to cross currently because they don't meet the weight standards for a school bus to cross those bridges with kids on. So we may, you know, not pave as many miles every year because we may need to take some of that money and use for bridge upgrades and bridge replacement to try to start working that list down as well. So we definitely have got the needs. I think if you drive through our county roads, we'll see deterioration in potholes. If the citizens elect not to pass this, it's like anything else that you let deteriorate. The more that deteriorates and the longer it goes, when you do fix it, it's gonna cost you more because there's more damage that's been done and more settling and cracking and you lose your base and you've gotta go in and start rebuilding. You're not just resurfacing, you're rebuilding roads in places. So it's very important to try to get a handle on this. And this gives us a great tool to use. Had a person earlier today said, "Well, why don't you raise it 2%?" The state does not allow us to do that. We can raise it a maximum of 1%, and that's the most we can raise it. So we don't have the option at this time to go any higher than the 1%. Anything else?
How often can you raise it?
It's a five-year, so once the citizens pass it, it's good for five years. Once that runs out, there'll be no debt because we've not bonded it, so we're not having to worry about that. And then it would go back on the ballot for the citizens to vote it up or down again. So it's a five-year program.
Well, I'll go with records and I'll plus you with it when I would be.
Yes, Josh?
Would you say that, I hate if I missed it, but the cities and the county, would that money be divided amongst them so the cities would have their road budget?
Yes, that's correct.
And one last question. Given that it was rejected, I'm saying five years ago, I believe, somewhere on there. Given that we know now the massive amount of debt that we're in, I mean, just in your opinion, you feel that citizens will see the need where we didn't back then because we didn't know the massive amount of debt that we've been hanging around?
Yeah, I think you're right. And I think as we go through these public meetings and the citizens see more, you know, transparency and information being provided, and we're not just gonna just show a budget. We're gonna show the history where you can look line by line. And I think when citizens see where we are and see the savings that we're projecting, and I feel like the citizens will trust what we're doing. And I think that's a lot of times when, in government, when people don't support something is because there is that lack of trust. And so that's something that my administration has worked real hard on, is to regain that trust for this office as county commissioner. So we, hopefully, we have showed and proven that this administration's doing the right things. We can be trusted. And then we take these dollars when the citizens support this T-splash and we use them as they're intended. And we don't waste it and we don't bond it and waste it on bonding attorneys and interests. And we take every dollar and put it to work. What else?
Go ahead, you said 70% of the people who are trusted.
And I hope that's increased. Good point. What else?
Well, I wanna say, all these people that do not come to this meeting and they still get on Facebook and they cry and complain and whine and carry on about subjects that they don't have a clue about. They won't get off their couch and come to these meetings. I think they need to just keep their mouths shut.
Yeah, there is a tremendous amount of misinformation and misquotes and things on Facebook. I'll definitely agree with that. Even saw a post on there the day that I responded to saying that I had fired BB. That's not possible for me to do. She fired herself.
She fired? How fired?
You know, she fired herself by not managing this county properly. So misinformation like that gets out and people get confused and created more question, "Well, how did the commissioner fire?" you know? So it just causes confusion. But you're right, I agree with you. I wish more people would come to these meetings. You know, I'm gonna take a Saturday to make myself available for people to attend a morning meeting on a Saturday. And we have these meetings in the evenings for people to attend at 6:30. That's something that I committed to do. If people feel like there's a better time, if we need to start at 5:00 or 6:00 or 7:00, I'm open to that. If we need to tweak the time a little bit, if people say that this is not a convenient time, I'm for whatever time the most people can attend. And I would rather have a room full here to be able to talk about things like this so you do get information and you walk out of here with something in your hand that shows what we've talked about and that you can reference back to. So I'd love to pack this place out every meeting. Yes?
Again, so there will be, in these meetings, there will be a line out on the budget.
Yes.
We'll see. Excellent. Is there any, anything that we can do? I know we've mentioned selling assets, county assets, Mountain Cove Farms. Are we to try to get those things sold or?
We do have a couple of pieces of property that we have been working on that we may be able to sell. Mountain Cove Farms is probably gonna be the most challenging because they put a $15.3 million debt against it, or lien against that property. That property was free and clear and they bonded and leveraged against it for $15.3 million. And so that property is probably worth half that because there's other properties that were leveraged into that, like our civic center and our ag center. It was all leveraged into that. And so even if we got a prospective buyer that wanted to give us top value for that property, we would have to go to the bonding company and say, "We're offering this cash to get that property released." And then the bonding company's gonna look at our balance sheet and say, "It's gotten worse." And they may or may not be willing to release that property. I'm sure they'll be willing to take the cash, but they may not release the collateral, which would kill the deal. Or we would have to go try to find another lender to buy that bond out so we could pay it down and refinance it. So selling Mountain Cove Farms is not impossible, but it would be very, very tricky to do, very time-consuming, and probably somewhat expensive dealing with bond attorneys. The most viable option on Mountain Cove Farms, we feel like, would be to lease it out. And so before the, for the calendar year end, we're gonna do a request for proposal that we've been working on to send out to give people the opportunity to give a proposal back to the county of ideas of how they would use it, how much they'd be willing to lease it for, and to get Walker County completely out of operating that facility completely. And so we've been working through that process and hopefully, in the next few months, we'll be able to release that and we get all the documents and everything that we need. And hopefully for 2018, be able to lease that facility out because it's still a money loser and a drain on the budget. We don't need to be operating a retail facility as a county government. We need to get out of this business.
I would like to say, when you drive onto Mountain Cove Farms, the entire left side of that road down there does not belong to Walker County. The main part of the agriculture and all the good land down there belongs to the DNR and the state of Georgia. Walker County owns the right side, which includes the barns up there and the cabins, just the general store and the restaurant and the RV park that doesn't do anything up there. So all of that is going back up on the side of the mountain, basically. So what have you got as far as value compared to what a lot of people think is such a big deal about selling Mountain Cove Farm and getting much a million dollars worth of money out of it? You can't do that.
And it's 20 acres in the middle of it. The county doesn't own it.
Yeah.
Between the barn and the store.
Yeah, you know, so a lot of people don't know that, but...
It would be a difficult sale. That's why it would be much easier to find somebody who wants to lease it long-term and turn it in from a negative to a positive just very quickly instead of trying to spend a bunch of money with bond attorneys to try to figure out how to unravel that deal right now. Now, as we come, you know, we get out of debt, we end up with a stronger balance sheet that gives us a lot more options. That gives us a lot more options. And then at that time, if it made sense to sell it, it'd be much more marketable. Once we get a credit rating other than junk status, where we can go to the bond market with an actual credit rating that's positive, then it's a, it's a game changer. But we're so upside down financially that it would be very difficult for us to try to do. Yes?
Shannon, the, uh, industrial park we have here on Twenty-Six with the, I don't know what the name of it is, plastics?
Audio.
Audio.
Audio. With all the investment that Walker County has put into that, what kind of return are we seeing from, from that? Or what do you project?
Well, it's very hard to measure. Anytime you have industrial development because there's not any sales tax revenue, and many times there's not any immediate property taxes because of property abatement that has to be done to get those industries in. This pretty much happens across the country where you have to do those abatements. And so basically what you're looking at is the job creation and at what pay level and benefits that you're creating for your citizens. And so really, the only measurable thing is, you know, is to approach them and look at their numbers of how many jobs they've created, how much payroll they're generating each month or each year that's going back into the local economy. So that's very measurable to be able to, to do that, you know, based off numbers that they would have to provide. The most lucrative is what we hope we have with the development at Canyon Ridge, where you're getting a development that's gonna employ a hundred and eighty-plus people, but you're also getting sales tax. And so you get immediate income into the county government. And that's why we were more aggressive in trying to bring that in because it would bring in a destination that's retail because you're gonna get job creations and the sales tax both. Industrial developments, most, every time you don't get any type of sales tax.
And you get a new sales tax or tax stream from hotel hotel tax?
Yeah, you have the hotel motel excise tax, uh, that would be utilized primarily to promote your area from a tourism standpoint and reinvest it into marketing and advertising to try to bring more attention to your, to your marketplace.
How is that moving?
Uh, they're still moving forward. They've got, uh, press release force coming that, uh, that I've had a preview to. So they are definitely still moving forward, and all indications, that project's still a go. As far as Canyon Ridge we're speaking of. Yes, ma'am?
How's the water treatment, uh, at Canyon Ridge?
Uh, the water treatment, we still are utilizing the filter trailers. Uh, we hope, they're trying to schedule a, schedule today, they was trying to schedule a work session for the board to dive deeper into the options and what the engineers are recommending. And so we're doing the preliminary work of engineering, and also state approvals will be forthcoming and budget and so forth to actually do a replacement of the filter plant, the internals. Uh, we, we should be able to use the existing property and build it and infrastructure, but we're gonna have to totally gut it from the mechanical side of that operation and put in a new filter plant. So we're still running two filter trailers that will filter about eight hundred gallons a minute per trailer. So that generates us, uh, filtered water of a little over two million gallons per day. So those trailers are run in twenty-four-seven because that well's producing over two million gallons a day. So we're working through that. What else?
I think Randall said last night when they tested the water with the filter, from, in the bottled water, they're the same. It's just as good as good can be.
Yeah, it's, uh, the best technology that you can get to filter water is what's there on site. And we hope to be able to use that same company to put in our actual permanent plant. So we're, we're very excited about that, that technology that they're using. So it's very impressive. Those, uh, those filter trailers are costing us thirty thousand dollars a month per trailer. And we signed a ten-month commitment to have those there. I was first a little bit undecided about that because that's a long period of time. But the flip side of that is, is that keeps those trailers from going to someone else. We've got those committed to us under contract. There has been some other communities that have experienced water problems. I know there was one here close to us that's under a boil water advisory. I forget the...
Fanning, Fanning County.
Fanning, Fanning County is under a boil water advisory? So you never know when those are gonna happen. And so at least we know we've got these trailers in place uh, with a ten-month secure contract that they can't pull those trailers to go handle another problem. Uh, because those trailers had to come out of New York, uh, was the closest trailers to us. So it, uh, it's not just something you open up the Yellow Pages and call your local filter company. Uh, it's a pretty specialized service that they offer to bring in a, a mobile unit like that. So we wanna make sure that those things don't get away from us before we get our plant finished or we'll be back to boiling water if that was to happen. All right, who's next?
Is any of the projects in Chickamauga gonna help the county?
Absolutely. Uh, they're building a, um, Metta Thrift Pharmacy. They're on Lingore Mill Road. And they're also building an O'Reilly's Park Store. Uh, so absolutely, the way the sales tax is structured, uh, any development in a city or county affects everybody because the pro rata share, that's being in the city of Chickamauga, but every city in our county will get a piece of that sales tax collection just like they do everywhere else now. So the Canyon Ridge development is one example. It's in the unincorporated area. But the cities will also see revenue increase off of that development. So it's a pretty good way to set that up and structure it so you're, you're sharing that revenue on a pro rata basis with this community so you don't end up getting an off-balance. So definitely, anytime you see development or retail growth in a marketplace, it helps the entire county. So, uh, even if you lived in Chickamauga and you go to the Walmart in Lafette, Chickamauga's gonna reap benefits from those sales tax proceeds. So we wanna encourage people to do as much shopping as they can in Walker County because it helps all five cities and the county. Uh, most people forget that there's a portion of the city of Fort Oberthorpe that's in Walker County. There's some houses up there. There's not any retail that I've been able to identify, but there are houses that are up there off of the bypass on Highway, uh, two.
Rebel Acres.
Rebel Acres, thank you. Rebel Acres is in Walker County, but that's also in the city of Fort Oberthorpe. So even though the city of Fort Oberthorpe has no retail, they get a portion every month of the sales tax from Walker County that goes to the city of Fort Oberthorpe. So, good question.
What about the housing projects is the ones I was really talking about, you know? I thought there were gonna be eighty units in there.
There's gonna be eighty units in behind Fred's and the hotel off of, uh...
Yeah, I, I think it will because if you've got eighty residents moving in and they're, if they buy and shop locally, if they use the local restaurants and, you know, local establishments to buy their groceries and things of that nature, uh, it will definitely help our economy and increase revenue. It will also increase property taxes, uh, even though that's in the city. As you well know, the county also charges property taxes on all, all land in the, in the county as a whole. So those values of those developments will help us. One thing I think too that's very positive is a little bit twisted is, is with, uh, CH Memorial forming that partnership with, um, Cornerstone Medical, uh, there's not any direct connection to Walker County as far as that agreement because the local county governments are out of the hospital business. Uh, so we didn't, we didn't have any involvement in that agreement. I found out the same day that everybody else found out. Uh, but if, if they improve the services there, bring more doctors, more specialists and all in, you know, that brings more people to that area, which will help and also employ more people that might wanna relocate here. So just that move of getting Memorial to come to Cornerstone will be a positive impact for Walker County and Catoosa as well. What else?
Is there any word on the Ross and Wills?
Yes, uh, I had a meeting with, uh, Stephen Henry, uh, this week. He come to the Development Authority meeting and talked to the Development Authority. He's, uh, working with, uh, some developers and putting some ideas and plans together for the Pureless Mill. He also is looking at other property in the area to expand his footprint. And so he seems to be moving forward. So there again, that's a development that it's probably gonna be a mixed-use development of living and retail both. And so that will, will benefit the entire county as well. So very excited about Stephen Henry and his partners that are doing that. And also will help the, uh, the value of the property. So we'll be able to gain over time increased value of property taxes as well as sales tax, and hopefully we'll bring more people into the community. Who's next? All right, well, great discussion. I thought this was gonna be a real quick meeting and not even anything for me to approve on the agenda tonight. So I appreciate you coming. I enjoyed the, the discussion and learning what you wanna know more about. And I do so much during the day. Sometimes I forget what people wanna hear about or get an update on. So I appreciate the questions and look forward to those and, uh, don't mind answering the questions at all. So we're officially done and appreciate you coming and look forward to seeing you at the public hearings. Thank you.